Marshall, you threw PR in?
Yes.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Lucas, you want to lead us?
Thank you, sir.
Let's pray. Father God, as we enter into this special week of Thanksgiving, we just look around at all the things that we do have to be thankful for. Our country, our state, our community, our county, our friends and family. Lord, this beautiful community that we live in, such a special place to each and every one of us. Lord, help us tonight to do the business of Branson in a way that would honor you and glorify your name and build your kingdom. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Artie. All right, Mayor Milton is unable to attend tonight, so I will be running the meeting and also maintain my representation for Ward 1, and we'll be voting on tonight's matters as normal. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Lucas, Howden, Cooper, Milton, Denham, LeBlanc, Schultz.
Here.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
All right, this is the public comment section of the Board of Alderman meeting. At this time, the Board will hear the citizens who have signed up in the order they are listed. Please note, the clerk will let speakers know when they have 30 seconds left, and a notification will sound when their time is up. We ask that speakers wrap up their comments upon hearing the 30-second warning. If a speaker would like a board member to bring an item from the consent agenda down for additional discussion, please note this request during your comments. Please come to the freestanding microphone in front of us to address the Board. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we have two speakers. Our first one is David Kishman, speaking on comments.
Mr. Kishman, come on down.
Are there any prizes?
There is not.
Hello, everyone, my name is David Kishman. For those that I haven't had the chance to personally meet, my home has been Branson, Missouri for the past 65 years. Mayor Protem, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, as you know, we have a large issue between the city and one of my companies. A month ago, a jury awarded us a $30 million judgment. We expect a final judgment will be executed by the court in just a few days that because of interest will increase the award by several million dollars. And this number grows every day while going through the appeal process. My attorney sent your attorneys a letter stating that we are offering to meet with this Board to come to a resolution suitable for both parties. Have all Board members seen the letter and had a chance to read it? It's been two weeks, and we've not heard back regarding our offer. I'm here tonight to personally invite you, personally invite this Board again to sit down with us to attempt to resolve this issue before costs continue to grow. The citizens of this community deserve to know what their elected official's intent is regarding our offer to meet. This is an issue that could impact the future of this community. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any... Who's our next speaker?
Our next and final speaker is Gary Gromen, speaking on, "Do we really want to do it this way?"
I think tonight I'm going to be the cheap date. I mean, least I again be accused of submitting... Least I again be accused of submitting something or saying something without basis. I will state my basis upfront. I believe that the role of an Alderman is to formulate municipal policy and exercise oversight as part of the collective Board. To me, that means that outside of your participation as a member of the Board, individually, you have no more power over city employees, activities, or events than any other citizen. Obviously, you can agree or disagree with this basis, but that's where I'm coming from. Paragraph 2-62B of the Branson Municipal Code currently authorizes Aldermen and the Mayor to request agenda items for regular Board meetings. To do so, the request must be submitted in writing to the City Administrator six days before the meeting and be submitted by either two or more Aldermen or the Mayor and one Alderman. Unfortunately, the provision is silent about Aldermen using common sense and courtesy and applying it. Recently, two Aldermen put an item on the agenda while the item was being negotiated by Administration as per the direction of this Board. That seems counterproductive and unprofessional to me. In this case, their actions caused no major consequences. That might not be the case in the future if such action is permitted to continue. Accordingly, I would recommend and suggest a consideration be given to changing the Branson Municipal Code along the lines of as follows. One, remove the sentence permitting such action from paragraph 262B of the Code and add a new paragraph 262C, reading something like the following. "A brief written request for Board consideration discussion of specific items shall be added to the agenda when submitted in writing by two or more Aldermen or the Mayor and one or more Aldermen and is delivered to the City Administrator six working days prior to the meeting. The City Administrator will present the request in the form of a one paragraph resolution to the Board quoting the request of the requesting Alderman. The requesting Alderman shall provide the staff report and the other information supporting their request. The Board may discuss and will decide if any further investment of city assets, money, or time is appropriate by either voting to send the matter to the City Administrator for appropriate action to the city's normal administrative processes or to do nothing." The other item I cover, I can't cover within five minutes, so I'm just going to cut it off here. And I take this opportunity to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody's got any questions or comments.
Thank you, Gary. Oh, Ruth? Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify. So instead of, like if, you know, the item is requested and then acted upon and then brought, you want a resolution so that the Board as a whole can state whether they want to move forward with it or...
I just figured the resolution would be a simple instrument to present to the Board, and all that would be in the resolution is a summary of what the Alderman wrote and submitted. They don't have to have it in any format. They say, hey, I want this discussed. Then the Board can discuss whether or not they want to invest additional time or city assets or resources in it, and then it would be submitted to the City Administrator. They'd handle it in the way things are normally handled. And that seems like the professional way to do it, rather than like, some of you just got that dumped on you three days before the meeting. You don't have time to do anything. It's a hell of a way to run a city. I'm... Heck, it... Sorry, Thanksgiving.
Thank you for the clarification, and happy Thanksgiving to you, too.
Hey, Clay.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a decent proposal. I've kind of thought through this long and hard, and we've had some deep discussions about this, about my... What I kind of had thought through six to seven months ago was, okay, two Aldermen can put something on the agenda, but something on the agenda doesn't really mean anything without significant staff time put forth to it, right? So the proposal that was put forward, well, what if two Aldermen can trigger staff time? And I think that was seen as kind of onerous and something that might not be for two Aldermen to trigger. So I think your proposal, the way I've worked through this concept is more if an Alderman and myself have something, we would instead put it on like a study session or a discussion so that each of the six could voice their opinions. And then if Administration saw that there was sort of a plurality or a majority on the Board, but voting on putting it on there and voting on triggering that kind of allotment of time makes sense as well.
You're right, it's a great idea. The important thing is, is that the Board gets a chance to decide as a whole before a lot of time, before time is invested with just one or two Aldermen wanting to do something.
So the proposal or the thought is, if two Aldermen bring this up, then the Board as a collective would have to vote on whether it makes it to the agenda?
Basically, because nothing can really be presented in good faith unless it has some amount of staff time, really. And really, if there was an adversarial thing, which doesn't happen in this case, we're all friends, but let's say we're in a different city where there's 20 Aldermen or something like that. Two Aldermen could bring something forward, and then staff could just stand there and say, we're not for it, you know? So really, there's a second order thing when you really have a bill that you want to get forward, and that's you need significant staff time. And what was discussed in length in a really good-faith conversation was that two Aldermen shouldn't trigger that if it's something that's going to die on the vine, two to four. But if we were able to have a discussion where all the Aldermen, or at least plurality, said... And maybe even that Alderman said, hey, I might not vote for this in the end, but I think this is worthy of staff time to study it. Right, right.
What are your thoughts, Kathy, on that?
First, thank you, Gary. I'm very interested in the idea, and you're right, Marshall and I have had conversations about this. If we do the study session route, that still requires significant staff time.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, for preparation. So I like the idea of just kind of putting the scope of what it is you want researched or the idea. And I think this resolution idea is pretty cool because then we're getting clear direction from the entire Board as a unit, a governing body. And it will help us definitely triage staff time. So I think it's got merit.
All I've ever wanted as an Alderman, putting something forward, is a process, right? And an opportunity to be able to take this in front of my fellow Alderman members, basically. And as long as there's a significant process, really, anyway, is fine. Because at the end of the day, it's going to be a majority vote, you know, regardless, so, interesting.
Anybody else have any thoughts before we move on? Okay. All right, that's all of the public comment. Next is the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the Board or staff would like to move down from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, just a question if I can first. We still have not gotten any financials from the Commerce Park CID?
That is correct.
Item number five?
Correct. That's... We have not.
We have not, okay. I won't call that agenda item down unless somebody else has other budgets that they want to go through from that, but I will comment during my report then on that issue.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Your Honor, the items on the consent agenda are as follows. Approval of the Board of Aldermen minutes for October 28, 2025. Special meeting and October 28, 2025, regular meeting. Acknowledged receipt of Finance Committee minutes for the September 11, 2025, regular meeting. Acknowledged receipt of the Planning Commission minutes for the October 7, 2025, regular meeting. Acknowledged receipt of Advisory Park Board minutes for the October 21, 2025, regular meeting. Acknowledged receipt of the Community Improvement District CID 2026. Budgets for the Fall Creek Valley, Branson Hills Infrastructure Facilities, Historic Downtown Branson, 76 Entertainment, and Butterfly Palace Cids. Acknowledged receipt of monthly contract report from October 6, 2025, to November 16, 2025. Acknowledgement of disbursements for October 20, 2025, through November 13, 2025. Final reading of Bill Number 6618, an ordinance adopting a budget and a capital program for the city of Branson, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1, 2026, through December 31, 2026. Your Honor, that concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion approving all the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk will now provoke a roll call.
Lucas.
Yes.
Howden.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yep.
Denham.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your Honor, the next item is an update on City of Branson third quarter financials.
And we'll have a report from Allison.
Good evening. Tonight I have the third quarter financial update for you guys. So starting with the General Fund, this graph right here shows 2023 compared to 2024 and 2025. For the General Fund, revenues excluding transfers are 506,000 greater than they were last year, and taxes and franchise B are 3% greater than this time last year. Here we have the General Fund revenue and expenditures for the year compared to where we are at in the budget. So we've collected 75%... Or 75% of the year has passed, and General Fund has collected 77% of budgeted revenues and expended 67% of budgeted expenditures. Moving on to the Tourism Fund, once again, we have the 2023, 2024, and 2025 numbers here. And looking at year-to-date revenues, they've increased 12% when compared to 2024, and our expenditures are $4,561,603 for 2025 as of quarter three. And then here again, we have the remaining budget amounts for revenue and expenditures. So once again, 75% of the year has passed, and we've collected 84% of budgeted revenues for the Tourism Fund, and we've expended 24% of budgeted expenses. For the Transportation Fund, we have revenue has increased 2.5% greater than 2024 for quarter three, and expenditures and transfers out have decreased by 5.6% when compared to 2024. We have collected 70% of budgeted revenues and expended 52% of budgeted expenditures. The reason it's only 70% when we're 75% complete with the year is because they do get grant revenue at the end of the year that's recorded in the fourth quarter. Here's our Public Safety Fund. Year-to-date revenues have increased by 1% when compared to 2024. And then moving on to the Water and Sewer Account, and we've done this on a cash basis to say what we've actually collected in revenue for our Water and Sewer Account versus accrual based on what we bill it on. So revenues for our cash basis have increased 8.5% when compared to 2024 cash basis. And then year-to-date revenues, we've collected 59% of budgeted revenues and expended 39% of budgeted expenses for our Water and Sewer Account. Parks and Rec, their revenue excluding grant revenue has increased by 13% over 2024, and expenditures excluding transfers out have decreased when compared to 2024. 72% of budgeted revenue has been collected in our Parks and Recreation Fund, and 65% of budgeted expenses have been expended. And then here is our favorite graph. So we compare 2023, 2024, and 2025 tourism tax revenue by class. We have, as of the third quarter, we had only got August collections, and that's why you see it cut off as of August. And that's when the businesses collected it, so we moved it back. So we collected in September, but the businesses collected this tax in August, so when they had the most sales. So we had moved it back to show when we were busy. So for amusement, tourism tax has increased 9% over 2024. Our theater revenue is up 34% over 2024. Our hotels and motels have increased 5%. Our campground revenue is down 6%. Our short-term rentals have increased 12%, and our restaurant and concessions has increased 7%. And you can see that 2025 has consistently been greater than all of 2024 and 2023 for every month. We do have a couple months, if you look at July, that it's increased way above 2024, but for the most part, all of those revenues are coming in consistently for each month. And then finally, we have our unrestricted sales tax, our public safety tax, and our transportation tax. Our unrestricted sales tax is 4.8% greater than quarter three of 2024. Our public safety tax and our transportation tax has increased 3% over 2024. Are there any questions about our quarter three financials?
Anybody have any questions, comments, Glenn?
Yeah, just on that slide that you're on there, the unrestricted 1% city sales tax, does that correlate to the city sales tax report that we put on the website under reports?
So this is only the unrestricted portion of that, so it's not the exact same that's in those reports.
Okay, so there's about, through that same period, there's about a $2 million difference then?
Yeah, just based on the different reports, because this is just the unrestricted 1%.
Okay. Then the other thing I noticed on this graph was in the, both the public safety and transportation taxes, you've got October shown there in the bars. Is that counted in that 3%?
So it's not counted in that 3%, but I did leave it in our graph to show you since we had already collected that from the state.
Okay. Would it be possible for us in the future... I love the graphs. The graphs are great, obviously, because it gives you a real quick visual summary. Would it be possible to get the actual financial reports as part of this package?
For sure.
Just so that when we're looking at these graphs, we can...
Yeah.
Go back and take a look. I would appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll start including that beside the graph so we can see the actual numbers compared to the graph.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be good. Be good to see. Anybody else?
One more question.
Yeah.
The Finance Committee didn't review this, right? There was no comment, did they?
There was no comment on it, but yes, we did go over this at the last Finance Committee meeting.
No comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody's good? Nice job, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Your Honor, this is the first reading, Bill Number 6622, an ordinance approving the second contract renewal of the Tourism and Marketing Services Contract between the City of Branson and the Branson Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce and Convention and Visitors Bureau, and authorizing the Mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6622. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. I will begin a report from Hillary.
So each year, the city enters into an agreement with the CBB for Tourism, Marketing, and Promotion Services in the form of advertising, public relations, digital advertising, and web promotion, to name a few, while utilizing the collection from the city's tourism tax. So this item is just approving the second contract renewal with the CBB. Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody, board?
I'll say something, Clay. So as I've been saying recently, I'm really thrilled with the direction that we're moving between our organization as a city and this entity. There have been some absolutely incredible moments of synergy between the belief system that our live music shows and theater history have a part to play in our tourism portfolio. And I think we all got another snippet of that, and we got in our boxes an invitation to the Black Tie Gala, which includes an Andy Williams-Andy Warhol crossover. So just another way to honor our legacy and appreciate Grant Sloan and his team for putting that together. And just one more bullet point that we have a chamber that really cares about that legacy. So I appreciate it very much.
It is refreshing. Anybody else on the board comments on this? Anyone in the audience?
Oh, I forgot to ask that on the last one.
Sorry. Huh? Yeah. All right, anybody in the audience want to speak on this, no? All right. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is first reading of Bill Number 6623, an ordinance approving the renewal of the contract with the Tannehill County Health Department for Public Health Services and authorizing the Mayor to execute the contract.
All righty, you've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6623. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
Second.
Motion and a second. Hillary.
So the City of Branson and Tannehill County Health Department first entered into a contract in January 2008 to solidify service integration between the two entities. Since then, the city and the health department have entered into contracts every year. So this item approves the 2026 contract renewal, and the terms are identical to the current year's terms. Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Hillary or Lisa Marshall back there?
Nope.
Anyone in the audience, questions, comments? They just do a great job. Tannehill County Health Department, appreciate you guys.
It's a good partnership.
Yeah, it is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote, 6-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 6624, an ordinance appointing Thomas Motley as municipal judge and approving the contract with the Motley Law Firm, PC, for municipal judicial services and actions related thereto.
I don't know about this. You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6624. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
So Section 30-55, sorry, of the Branson Municipal Code states that the municipal judge shall be appointed by the Mayor with the consent and approval of a majority of the members of the Board for a term of not less than two years. Judge Motley has served as a municipal judge for the city for 23 years.
Woo!
Started when he was two years old here with the city. He's had several board positions on the State Judges Association throughout the years. He is also a Missouri Supreme Court appointee to the Missouri Municipal Judge Education Committee. He's, and is serving his second term on the Missouri Court Automation Committee, which was also a Supreme Court-appointed position. And that one oversees the state's court technology systems. There's a lot of representation in the whole state there from our local community. And so this item is just a two-year contract and appointment of Thomas Motley for judge of the Branson Municipal Court until December 31, 2027. Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody want to say anything about Judge Motley while they're here? I love the guy. Hey, he's just, he's a great guy. We're lucky to have him, huh? No, I don't have any tickets pending. That's just an honest opinion of Judge Motley. Chief?
Yeah, just wanted to second the support of Judge Motley from the police perspective. When we need assistance with some of our repeat offenders, he listens, and he always has been a way to solve problems with us when I've approached him with concerns and so forth. So full support from the PD.
All right, thank you. I was expecting something more smart aleck, but that was, that was great. That was, that was...
Not when it comes to judges.
No, that's right, yeah. That was sincere, and I agree with you 100%. Thank you, Judge Motley. Anybody in the audience want to speak on this? Nope? All right. So we're renewing two years here, is that what...
That is correct, yep.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Let's do it. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 6625, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement with Tannehill County for reimbursement payment to the Tannehill County General Aviation Airport and authorizing the Mayor to execute the agreement.
You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6625. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
Second.
Motion and a second. Where we begin? We'll be beginning with a report from Hillary.
So yeah, in 2006, the Board of Alderman approved a five-year agreement showing their support for the continued operation of the M. Graham Clark Airport, a general aviation airport owned and operated by Tannehill County. And then the city has since entered into five-year agreements since. The current five-year agreement expires December of 2025, and so this item approves an intergovernmental agreement for the next five years with Tannehill County for reimbursement payments up to $10,000 per year for qualified expenses to the, to the Tannehill County Airport. So happy to answer any questions.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to point out, it's public knowledge, but I am on the Board of this airport, so if the Board would like me to step aside for this item, I'm happy to do so.
I don't think it's necessary. Anybody have any comments? We're good? Anybody in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
The result of the vote is five ayes and one abstention. Motion carries. Your Honor, this is first reading of Bill Number 6627, an ordinance approving the Show Me Zero Program Agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and authorizing the Mayor to execute the documents related thereto.
You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6627. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
Yeah, yes.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll begin with a report from Chief Schmidt.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the Board. This is a simple agreement with the state of Missouri for the Show Me Zero Program, which is specifically targeting driving wheel ability impaired, in this case, under the influence of marijuana. It's helping with those goggles I spoke to you guys about last time so we can buy three sets of goggles and training for two officers so that we can instruct for our kids in the school. so that we can instruct for our kids in the schools, as well as our adults out there on the effects of marijuana. Having lived through all of this in my previous career in Colorado, I can tell you with the potency of the THC now, the results of just even a couple joints now will be the same as being over a .1 for alcohol, so it's very important that we get out to the community and our drivers that smoking a couple joints does not equal a safer alternative to drinking and driving, so we do recommend support of this. No, I'm saying that you should not do either.
Do either. Okay, any members of the board wishing to speak on this? Anyone in the audience? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill number 6628, an ordinance approving a property exchange agreement and commercial real estate lease agreement with the Tannehill County Ambulance District for exchange of property owned by TCAD located at 303 Cedar Street, with property owned by the city located at 3500 Keter Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute the documents related thereto.
You've heard the first reading of Bill number 6628, do I have a motion approving the bill?
Second.
Motion and a second, and Michael Woods.
Very quickly, we'll go back over this, we had an MOU that worked with this, so a memorandum of understanding for property exchange was entered into, that's correct, June 11 of 2024, not 2025. So we've been working on this for quite a while. The board thankfully let us have discussions with TCAD about swapping buildings and land and some things that are going to help with the 76 CID and maintenance building. A property exchange agreement, real estate agreement, what was the result of that, and that's why we're here today. Just to remind everybody where it is, it's kind of behind Mr. Cooper's theater. TCAD actually used to be the old, one of the original fire stations that Ted got going, so sold it to them and now we're getting it back, so no dollar value that's there. A picture of the front of the building and its services are going to be for 76 maintenance crew. Make sure that they can get up and on 76 to remove dirt and make sure that the snow and take care of the plants and all the 5,000 things that we take care of up there, so pretty nice deal. A little bit about the land that was there, you've seen this before in the property. Our legal team has worked to get the real estate transaction put together. This is the piece of property that the City of Branson is vacating to them or conveying to them, and so it's a little piece out by the salt barn, out by the other fire station. Pursuant to the property exchange agreement, TCAD agrees to convey the transfer to us, and TCAD's right and interests in the TCAD property, and then we agree to give them that property, so that's all the legal verbiage that we need there. This exchange is on an equal basis with no monetary consideration other than a dollar, so I think that's a legal term to make it happen, right, Solon? So I am asking for a double read as a little bit of timing where we didn't have the other meeting and we're trying to go to closing before the end of the year. TCAD has gotten all their money and they're excited to build their building next. Happy to answer any questions.
Michael, when do you suspect this changeover, when do you suspect you guys will take over that?
Less than a year, from what their contractor's saying, so.
What a no-brainer for, as far as location for y'all.
Yeah.
Right? Anybody else? No, anyone in the audience?
Michael, maybe you should explain to them the lease back if
Okay, yeah.
To respond to that question about when we were taking it.
Okay, so, perfect, so they have up to 18 months to vacate the property. We're basically, we're taking in the property and exchanging, or releasing back to them at no charge other than to make sure to take care of insurance and maintenance on the building as their building gets built. They do have a locked-in construction contract, but they actually need the property to move forward, so. And their bonding's completed also. Anything else you want to add, Solon? I know Solon worked really hard with me to get this to the finish line, so my answer was always no, it has to go, so.
Okay, awesome. Anyone else? So we're, okay?
Our property or theirs?
Oh yeah, it's right over there, yeah.
The overall aerial is there, where the dot is. It's rough land, I'm happy that they were able to make that work.
Mm-hmm.
So very thankful they were able to get their easements, so.
Is that all you had, Ralph? Okay. Let's vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to read Bill number 6628 for its final reading due to timing.
We have a second. All right, motion and a second, any members of the board wishing to speak? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for the item?
Your Honor, this is the final reading, Bill number 6628, an ordinance approving a property exchange agreement and commercial real estate lease agreement with the Tannehill County Ambulance District for exchange of property owned by TCAD located at 303 Cedar Street, with property owned by the city located at 3500 Keter Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute the documents related thereto.
You've heard the final reading of Bill 6628, do I have a motion approving the bill?
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this? Anyone in the audience? All right, Madam Clerk, will you provide a roll call vote?
Lucas.
Yes.
Howden.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yeah.
Denham.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yep.
Schultz.
Yes.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill number 6629, an ordinance approving a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to revise the project number for the TAP 9900868 grant agreement for the West 76 Boulevard Segments 1 and 2 project, and authorizing the mayor to execute the documents related thereto.
All right, you've heard the first reading of Bill 6629, do I have a motion approving the bill?
No move.
Motion and a second, we'll begin a report from Michael.
So we presented this to you before, what ended up happening is the final execution of the document, the federal ID number or the federal money that comes through was used before, so on the original agreement that you did, that was signed, it basically nullified the contract, so a scribbler's error, but we couldn't fix it that way, so brought it back to you again. This relates to money on 76. Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? All right, let's vote, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to read Bill number 6629 for its final reading due to fixing a discrepancy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone in the audience? Please vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Madam Clerk.
Your Honor, this is the final reading, Bill number 6629, an ordinance approving a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to revise the project number for the TAP 9900868 grant agreement for the West 76 Country Boulevard Segments 1 and 2 project, and authorizing the mayor to execute the documents related thereto.
You've heard the final reading of Bill 6629, do I have a motion approving the bill?
No move.
All right, any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone in the audience? Madam Clerk, will you now provide a roll call vote?
Lucas.
Yes.
Howden. Cooper.
Yes.
Denham.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill number 6630, an ordinance approving the contract with CJW Transportation Consultant LLC for WOW Factor Final Design at the intersection of West 76 Country Boulevard and Highway 165, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the first reading of Bill 6630, do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, Michael?
As always, in the background, we're working with the 76 board and developing plans for 76. This is one of the last pieces, did I lose it? So this is at 165 in Gretna and 65, kind of the corner where Walgreens is. Again, very close to the property that we talked about previously, so I got to use the same Google snip, I enjoyed that, so. This is the rendering that they came up with, so we spent a little bit of money doing development of that. This is to develop the final construction plans for that rendering with CJW. The money's on that, it's 76 CID board approved, of course, and then we bring it to you to say they approved it and ask for your blessing. Also, the budgeted costs are not on the City of Branson, but from 76 ECID. Staff recommends approval, happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Can you throw that back up there, Chad, please? Yeah, man. That's cool.
It's pretty cool.
That we're really, I mean, that's, that's a great empty, I mean, that's perfect because it's just a nice piece, a little nothing there.
Well, I think there's a CC flag going up next to, in the middle there, they just, they don't know.
Michael?
That's cool.
So that hits one of the two, I think, primary themes, patriotism and veterans. I look forward to seeing the one that's got the music note and all that kind of stuff, maybe in the future, so. Just my advocacy, thank you, buddy.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's cool.
So, yeah, I'll address that, there's six there, two, four, six.
What did you, what was the?
Space Force is there too, oh, sorry, already asked for Space Force. It may not be deflected correctly, again, this is a rendering from, you know, who knows what engineer picked that out, so I sure hope so. I don't think it is, but.
See, Michael, the only thing I noticed in looking through the contract is the, it says to complete this in a reasonable time.
Yeah.
And I thought, you know, for the pressure that's on this project and all the other things, that seemed like kind of an odd statement.
Yep, so that makes sure that the agreement is between the city and the engineering firm. We are at the finish line with this, so a reasonable amount of time is a few months. So then the plans are ready to go, so.
A few months till what? What do you mean?
Couple months, just for the actual construction documents.
Oh, I got you.
It's CD documents, which is like construction, so you have the conceptual, the intersections actually are designed and ready, sitting on the shelf for January 2026 to come around, so we're excited.
That's going to be a great little piece right in the middle right there, ma'am.
Yes, all the members of the board did an excellent job of getting through all the different renderings and getting to that.
That's so nice.
Clay, I've said this before, I used to believe that in front of Jim Stafford's Theater was kind of like the front porch of Branson, but now I think it's that intersection with your theater and the Titanic and everything, so it's a great location as well, Michael, it's really going to show off our values in a really central location, so.
Anybody else? Any members of the audience? All right, let's vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Thank you, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Is there not a double?
I don't know.
Oh wait, okay.
Here.
Go ahead.
Your Honor, I move to read Bill number 6630 for its final reading, because Michael asked for it and timing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding this matter? Nope? Please vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Madam Clerk, would you, clerk, would you please provide the introduction for the item?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of Bill number 6630, an ordinance approving the contract with CJW Transportation Consultants LLC for WOW Factor Final Design at the intersection of West 76 Country Boulevard and Highway 165, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the final reading of Bill 6630, do I have a motion approving the bill?
Second.
Thank you again.
Any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone in the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please provide a roll call vote?
Lucas.
Yes.
Howden.
Yes.
Yes.
Denham.
Yes.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the canceling of the
Not happened, Michael, that's for real.
The canceling of the December 23, 2025 Board of Alderman Meeting due to the Christmas holiday.
Do I have a motion approving the cancellation of the December 23, 2025 Board of Alderman Meeting?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, are there any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? All right, anyone in the audience? Let's vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
All right, it's time for reports, and we'll start with Alderman Lucas.
Oh my goodness, the holidays are here. I've shared with you that I've got my whole family coming in for the first time in nine years. Looking forward to them all being here, and we'll try to behave so that the chief doesn't have to send anybody out after any of us. It's a wonderful time to be in Branson. With the Christmas lights up and the town looking great. Financially, we're doing wonderful. I had the opportunity at the end of last week to have a great conversation with the mayor, and it was a good conversation, and so looking forward to him getting back and getting on down the road with our business and wishing him well. Happy Thanksgiving to all you turkeys.
Alderman Howden.
Mr. Cooper, with your permission, I would like to invite Chief Schmidt down to the podium, I've got a little Christmas gift for him.
Ooh, little Christmas gift. Oh boy.
All right. Hey, could you guys throw that picture up on the screen for me, please? Chief, tonight I have the honor of presenting a commemorative plaque to the Branson Police Department that acknowledges the remarkable history of the building that now serves as our new police station. Before this facility became a home for public safety, it was home to one of the true legends of American music, Charlie Pride. From 1994 to 1998, the Charlie Pride Theater stood right here as his Branson home base. During those years, he performed nearly 200 shows a year in this building, filling it with the unmistakable voice that made him one of country music's greatest trailblazers. Charlie Pride broke barriers, united audiences, and helped shape the soundtrack of American life. His time in Branson left a lasting imprint on our entertainment legacy, and his presence here is still remembered with great affection and respect. As we move forward with this building's new chapter, serving and protecting the people of Branson, it's fitting to honor the chapter that came before it. This plaque recognizes that continuity of service to the community from a legendary entertainer who brought joy to thousands, to the men and women who now bring safety and security to our city every day. Chief, on behalf of the Song of Hope Historical Society, it is my privilege to present this Charlie Pride Theater commemorative plaque to the Branson Police Department. Thank you.
Are we all getting in, or?
Come on, guys.
Duck down so we can get in. All right, everybody's taking pictures.
All right. I had a call from the mayor about a couple hours ago, and he was on his way home, about 100 miles from Branson, and he wanted to report that he will be at the ribbon cutting for the PD and attending the adoration parade, and will be here for our next meeting sitting in this chair, so. Welcome back, Mayor Milton. That's exciting. And we wish him the best, he sounded great and he's anxious to get back here, so there's my report. Alderman Denham.
There's just so much to be thankful for, we There's just so much to be thankful for. We are in a great city, have a great community. Thankful for our mayor coming back, and I just wish everybody a beautiful Thanksgiving, spending time with your friends and family. Just remember to be thankful, just for every day we wake up, we're breathing, we're on the right side, so happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Alderman LeBlanc.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, glad the mayor's gonna be back. That's a great thing. I had a talk with him over the weekend, and he's in great spirits, and he's pretty anxious to get back. Marshall, that plaque, I mean, what a legacy that Charlie Pride started in that building, and to think, you know, this community's gonna carry on, that'll always be the Charlie Pride Theater, and what was done there, you know, kind of fed this market and fed this industry, and now it's gonna feed the residents and serve them from what I could tell many, many years to come. So, what a great opportunity this board took to save a theater, you know? I mean, really, truly, I don't think anyone had an idea the monumental lift it would take to bring that booger back to life, but we sure did, and did it in a very economical way, in a very smart way. So, congratulations to the police department on that, and I'm looking forward to that ribbon cutting for sure. Chief Martin. Wow. Thirty years. You have seen the wind change directions in this place many, many times. And as from me to you, sir, I would like to say thank you for all that you brought. And I hope that, I know from the time that I was elected to this board, it was a duty of this board to bring down those silos and make this city hall function at a higher level. And you brought a lot of character and a lot of insight into making that happen. So, my wish then, and I hope that it's met now, is that these last several years, almost four now, that I have served, I hope have been some of the best years of your stay here in Branson, because we've had discussions outside, and I remember when you told me, like, I've never seen this city run as efficient as it has been, and that really stuck with me for a long time. And I just want to make sure that I acknowledge that I still remember that conversation, and thank you for that, because that was my intention, being a board member here, was to make sure that happened. And for all that you have done over these last thirty years, this town is a better place because you are here, and thank you so much for that, and.
Amen to that. And happy Thanksgiving. Ditto, Ralph.
Glad we got rid of those boxes. But to everyone else on this board, city administrators, all department heads, you guys have a wonderful, happy Thanksgiving. Brian, to you and your family, happy Thanksgiving, and you guys, too.
Alderman Schultz.
Yeah, it seems like so long ago, but really had a good time with Veterans Week. That was nice. Did something different this year, speaking of Ted's leadership. Ted got the CERT group restarted in the city of Branson, and we had a real nice class graduate from that last training session under his leadership. And that CERT group was there at the parade doing crowd control, and so, well organized. They had a trailer there, comms trailer and everything, teamed up with the ham radio folks, and it was a really nice event for us, so thanks, chief. That was great to do, and it was just great to see all the veterans, the men and women that have served our country so admirably. It's been mentioned a couple of times, but just to officially put on the calendar, December seventh is the adoration parade and the lighting of the nativity scene, and once again, we have to say, you know, I know Ted almost more from what he does on a volunteer basis in this city than what he does for his official job, because I see him everywhere when I go out to social activities in the city. So, I was up there, what was it, just a few weeks ago, helping his crew with setting up the nativity set, and I've done that for years and taking it down, and that's one of the many things that Ted leads in this community. But anyhow, the lighting of the nativity scene will be on December seventh in conjunction with the parade as well. Then one other thing, I've attended for quite a few years, and it's just gotten bigger and bigger and bigger, and it really showcases Branson. It's called the Night of Wonders. It'll be on December seventeenth at seven PM. It's grown so large that this year, they needed a bigger facility. They had it in all these various churches in Branson. Now they'll have it in the Hollister High School auditorium, but this will be the Branson Corral, the Branson Community Orchestra, the Branson Community Kids Small Group, Hollister High School students and professional musicians. Doors open at six-thirty. It's completely free, and from six-thirty to seven, the kids perform for kind of some lightweight entertainment before the official show starts. It's a lot of fun, and if you've never seen the corral and the orchestra before, it's quite impressive. They really carry forward our musical tradition of Branson. So, I'd encourage you to visit that December seventeen, seven PM, in Hollister High School. I, too, want to wish everybody here a happy Thanksgiving, and to all the staff, and to all the residents of Branson, a happy and safe and joyful Thanksgiving to everybody. I do have one thing that I want to report on. I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. You know, Alderman Lucas and I worked pretty hard this past year to try to get some of our CID situations on a little better path. And I'd like to say we are hugely successful, but I think that would be way off the mark. We may be at best, we're marginally successful in that effort. But I have an update for you, because there's been some legal filings that shed some light on the Branson Hills CID. I'm sorry, Branson Commerce Park CID, my apologies. This thing was started in two thousand and six, just for a little bit of history there. They started defaulting on bonds already in two thousand and thirteen. So, this thing's been cooking for a long time with the troubles that it has. As of November tenth, they're in default of over twenty-three million dollars to the bondholders for the bond principal and interest. So, rather substantial problems. The filing also points out that the trustee created a special purchase organization to buy the majority of that property at a tax sale in two thousand and twenty-one. So, the trustees at the direction of the bondholders bought up the property. That organization then sought bids on the property, and that brings us to where we are today. There's been a purchase and sale agreement dated October thirteenth of this year, and it's pending in front of the Denver Probate Court under a magistrate there for order and instruction, which is a formality that says that they are executing a way that the bondholders want them to execute. So, what'll happen if this all goes through is subject to the terms of that sale agreement. A company named Alpha Prime will acquire the district property for five, almost five-point-eight million dollars, free and clear of any bond obligations. And what's interesting about this contract, and this is where it comes back to the city, is it says thus, as part of this transaction, all special assessments would be repealed, and the district would be terminated. Upon consummation of the traction, of the contraction, all, I'm sorry, of the transaction, all bonds would be canceled. So, there's two hundred forty-three acres of commercial property comprising thirty-six lots commercial for multifamily and twenty-five acres of residential property, a hundred nineteen lots, for a total of two hundred sixty-eight acres, or a little over twenty-one thousand dollars an acre is the purchase price. So, here's the thing, I think this is worth us as aldermen in the city being aware of, because if this closes on time, I think within the first quarter of next year, the city will probably be getting a lot of questions from the buyer about the status of the zoning within that development. And I think the city should also ensure, based on some of our other issues we've had in the past, that we look at our right of ways and make sure they're properly established for what we want to do as a city before all this takes place. As aldermen, part of this will be that the, we will be petitioned to cancel the CID. So, there will at some point be a petition in front of us, probably towards the end of quarter one, that the CID will cease. And probably the good news for RD and I and all of our constituents that keep calling us and writing us and asking about this, and Kathy's been involved in some of these correspondence, too, is once that happens, once we vote that CID out of existence, all the special assessments to all the residents up there end. The CID ceases, and it comes off of your property taxes. No more CID to pay for. So, we're hopeful that's the outcome. This is just like any real estate transaction. It could still fall through as it works through the process, but at least you see some light at the end of the tunnel for a very difficult CID situation for the city. So, I hope that's good news for the residents, and I hope it comes to be. That's my report.
Wow. All right, Kathy, you have anything? Huh? No? Yes, okay.
Just one thing I want to remind everybody about with the holiday season that we're about to enter is to encourage everybody to take part in our Adopt a Senior program. So, this is for opportunities to go and visit some of our staff at the community center and at the Recplex, and they have wish lists from different seniors, and you are able to go out and shop from that list and then bring those things back wrapped to either of those locations, the community center or the Recplex. And I'm really hoping people really turn out for that and participate, because it's really a lovely program. So, you can find program details in the press release. It's all available on our website. And then I, too, want to give wishes of safe travels to the mayor. I was on the phone with him for last night, too, so it sounds like he hasn't put his phone down for like forty-eight hours, based on the other reports, but I'm very thankful for so many things, the privilege to be in this job, the privilege to work alongside all of you, and to lead our staff who are doing gargantuan things on a daily basis around here. We've got a very exciting two thousand and twenty-six coming, and of course, we've still got to put the bow on two thousand and twenty-five, and it's just been an amazing ride, and what a privilege. So, I'm thankful for all of you and thankful for that privilege to be able to sit here in Branson at this moment in time. And of course, thankful for Chief Martin. We'll have lots of time to celebrate Chief Martin.
Oh, yeah.
And he just loves this attention. Can you just tell by the look on his face? He's mortified when people start singling him out. So, we will have every effort to make sure he is sent out with the confetti and the horns blasting and all of the pomp and circumstance that is due. So, Ted, from me to you, thank you.
Very nice. All right, do I have a motion to go into closed executive session?
Your Honor, I move to go into closed executive session pursuant to six-one-oh-point-zero-two-one-point-one RSMO for legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you now provide a roll call vote?
Lucas. Howden. Cooper.
Yes.
Denham.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Result of the vote is six-zero, motion carries.
The board will now move into closed executive session and will return to the council chambers once executive session is over to adjourn the Board of Alderman regular meeting.